Chris.
Gurnett.
Here.
Jerem.
Milton.
Pauls.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for your vacation today by Councilmember Chris Jerem.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to take a minute to reflect upon the trial going on with courthouse this week that's very important to a lot of people in this city, particularly one of the neighborhoods that I represent and grew up in, another one in the western part of the city whose family members were murdered. So we just want to reflect and pray that justice is done and trials conducted in a fair and impartial way and the right verdict is reached. Thanks.
City Clerk certifies publication on daily record official newspaper on September 30th, no secret council and regular city council meeting October 4th, 2016. A current copy of the opening act is posted in white binder on East Wall, Let's Have Chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would encourage you to please turn off or mute any of your cellphone devices or electronic devices. Mr. Clerk.
Ordinance on final reading and resolutions, rate bonds. Item number five, ordinance supplemental and amending ordinance number 37505, which authorizes the city of Omaha to issue sanitary sewage system revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds for the improvement of the city sanitary sewage system.
Public hearing was held on 9/27/16. Is there a motion?
Not this one.
The first one?
Oh, I'm sorry, it has an amendment of the whole as well.
Okay.
Motion to approve amendment of the whole.
Moved and seconded to approve the amendment of the whole on item five, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment of the whole on five is passed as amended, seven to zero. Item six, ordinance supplemental to ordinance number 37507, authorizing and directing issue of additional bonds not to exceed $43,500,000 sanitary sewage system revenue refunding bonds, and we have an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing was held on 9/27/16. Motion.
Motion to approve amendment of the whole.
Moved and seconded to approve the amendment of the whole on item six, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Six, amendment of the whole on six is passed as amended, seven to zero. Item number seven, resolution, the preliminary official statement pertaining to the issue and sale of sanitary sewage system revenue refunding bond series 2016, hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven was held, a public hearing is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item seven, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment of the whole on six is adopted, seven to zero. Zoning ordinance, final reading, planning board attachments, item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located at 6404 North Seventieth Plaza from R5 Urban Family Residential District and R7 Medium Density Mูล Family Residential District to R7 Medium Density Mูล Family Residential District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item eight, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight is passed, seven to zero. We'll take nine through 11, it's one case. Nine is resolution, the primary platton town Kunzi Commons located southwest of 26th Avenue and Douglas Street is hereby accepted. Per person final plat is authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ten is resolution to replat transmitted here with entitled Kunzi Commons is hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 11 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items nine through 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10-909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, 68154. And with me is Tim Holland as well, with Holland Bastian, if there's any questions for him. This is a minor plat through planning commission a few months back and finalizing our subdivision agreement and the final plat for the Kunz Memorial Church to expand, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. We're moving and seconded to approve items nine through 11. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. I do have a question. I know, is the church going to expand or are they going to put in, I've heard like a health clinic there?
You know, I think we'll have Tim Holland with HBA speak on that particular question here.
Tim Holland, 119 South 49th Avenue. Kunz Memorial Church is expanding their outreach missions, so the new building will include a integrated healthcare delivery model, so there is a nonprofit that will be providing services, free and reduced services for both physical and mental health, so it's integrated together into one care package. And then in addition to that, there's a large food pantry component also.
Could I ask, is a doctor by the name of Jerry Fisher, is he involved in that?
Absolutely. He's the one who put it together.
Well, the reason I want to do that is I want to do a shout out. He was a physician of mine, I called him my kidney doctor, and this is one, he retired.
Yes.
And he is just one of those unique individuals who continues to give, and I just, it just has to be a shout out because he is a very interesting eclectic individual, but he has, he's just what I call just a piece of good work, and I just wanted to do a shout out to him because he meant a lot to me at one time in my life.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just second that as well. So Dr. Fisher is a constituent of mine and a great individual, very active in the community, and he did take me for a tour through his clinic here, I don't know, about a year ago. And it was bootstrap for sure in terms of the facilities he was working with, but a very important population he was serving, and I know this upgrade, which is already underway, the demolition is almost complete it seems, will be a great improvement for the services he provides to the community too, so happy to be supporting this today as well. Thanks.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve items nine through 11, and no further lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine through 11 are adopted, seven to zero. Twelve through 14 are one case. Twelve is resolution, the primary platton tile, acres located northeast of 132nd Street and Rainwood Road is hereby accepted, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And thirteen is resolution, the platton tile Myers Acres is hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And fourteen is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers twelve through 14 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve items 12 through 14, and no further lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Members of the council, my name is John Fulencamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Celebrity Homes who has acquired an 18.7 acre parcel of ground that is west of 144th Street and east of Military Road. This will constitute the last phase of the Wood Valley subdivision. There are 67 lots on, like I said, a little shy of 18 acres. Comes to you with the recommendation of approval from the planning department and the planning board. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 15, and no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifteen is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of city council, when caused and I placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council, me following the consent agenda in the order once they are removed as otherwise provided by city council rules of order. Mr. President, we need to remove item number 21 from the ordinance consent agenda.
Thank you. Public hearing, I mean, the public hearing on agenda items 19 and 20 were held last week, 17th. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moving and seconded to approve items 18 and 19, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 18, resolution that Big Red is granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at the Good Life Sports Bar and Grill, 1203 South 180th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 1124H on Ball Boulevard. I'm with me today Chad McMahon, the owner of the Good Life, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 18, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you. Does that conclude your testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 16, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
16 is adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, item number 17, Stave Ridge Suites, Omaha, 7825 Davenport Street, request permission to appoint David Jorgensen, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name's David Jorgensen, and I'm at 7825 Davenport Street with the Stave Ridge Suites.
Thank you. Are there any other, do you have any other?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moving and seconded to approve item 17, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
17 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 18, resolution that Big Red is granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at the Good Life Sports Bar and Grill, 1203 South 180th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 1124H on Ball Boulevard. I'm with me today Chad McMahon, the owner of the Good Life, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 18, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
17 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 18, resolution that Big Red is granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at the Good Life Sports Bar and Grill, 1203 South 180th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 1124H on Ball Boulevard. I'm with me today Chad McMahon, the owner of the Good Life, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Moving and seconded to approve item 18, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of city council, when caused and I placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council, me following the consent agenda in the order once they are removed as otherwise provided by city council rules of order. Mr. President, we need to remove item number 21 from the ordinance consent agenda.
Thank you. Public hearing, I mean, the public hearing on agenda items 19 and 20 were held last week, 17th. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moving and seconded to approve 18 and 19, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Or 19 and 20.
19 and 20, I'm sorry, 19 and 20.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 and 20 are passed, seven to zero. Item number 21 is ordinance to change the city council district boundaries pursuant to Nebraska rights statutes.
Motion only over two weeks.
Moving and seconded to delay over two weeks, no lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is late over two weeks, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 22 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I would like to take a point of personal privilege to have Jeannie Wise come to the microphone, please. I wanted to give her an opportunity to talk about Building Healthy Futures, item 27. This is one of the items that, you know, this council has supported for about the last seven years, and they have done some tremendous work, but I won't steal your thunder, I'll let you have it.
Thank you, Jeannie Wise, Building Healthy Futures. First, I want to thank the city of Omaha, the mayor's office, as well as the city council in supporting our initiatives specifically around oral health care for the last few years. So I wanted to give some updates around some of that care that's been given with those city dollars. During the 2015-16 school year, over 6,000 students were served by oral health services within Omaha, primarily in North Omaha and South Omaha, and those services were provided by our care providers. So Charles Drew Community Health Center, One World Community Health Centers, Creighton School of Dentistry is UNMC's College of Dentistry. So through that effort, we did education, fluoride, varnishing, sealants, as well as restorative care, where they actually are removing teeth, drilling and giving, filling cavities, et cetera. But in addition to those 6,000 visits there, Building Healthy Futures have been working with our provider partners around vision, and this past year we've screened over 4,900 students for vision needs. Out of that, 32% had a failure rate, meaning that they required a full exam and were not seeing to their maximum potential, therefore potentially impacting learning outcomes. So through that effort, we were then able to give free exams to 470 students, and 570 of those students ended up receiving a free pair of glasses through a partnership with UNMC College of Public Health as well as a fund or one site. And then our school-based health centers served over 8,000 students for primary care visits and 1,200 students for behavioral health. So in total, our program has been able to impact the past year over 20,000 students, really focusing in on students that have access issues or barriers to care and helping health systems rethink care delivery models so that we can get care to kids that may not receive care due to language barriers, transportation, cultural barriers, et cetera. So thank you very much for supporting our work. It's been a joy doing this.
But it's been a great investment as well.
Yes.
For the city.
So thank you.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I agree, and I'm glad you gave them the opportunity, because I was about to do the same thing, and I think it has been a difference maker in kids' lives, making them healthier, allowing them to learn and be successful in school. Impressive numbers you decided. And I also wanted to mention the schools that I believe you're in, which are pretty much all around our city council districts. I believe you're providing services, at least in the elementary schools, to Central Park, Conestoga, Fontanelle, Hartman, King, Minnaloosa, Mountview, Rose Hill, Skinner, and Walnut Hills.
Yep.
So we appreciate the extra attention you're giving to those schools.
Yes. Well, and actually, between all the health services, we have 32 buildings that we're impacting within Omaha Public Schools. So approximately a third of the buildings within OPS are being a site for healthcare delivery.
Thank you. I just wanted to let people know what a good investment.
Well, thank you very much.
A good investment we made here.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do have a schedule, if anybody wants to come do any site visits, I'll check it out.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items 22 through 27. No lights roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
22 through 27 are adopted, seven to zero. Resolution, item number 28, resolution attached Uptown, Gifford Park District Tech Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment site located at 3320, 3326 Davenport and 3127 to 3129 California Street, which proposes to construct a total of 11 attached rowhouse residential units in two phases, recommend the city participate in the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, public hearing on agenda item number 28 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is the Uptown Gifford Park TIF redevelopment project for two sites in the Gifford Park neighborhood. And outlined, or shaded in blue, are the two sites. This is at 32nd and California. This is at 34th and Davenport. Of course, this is the Gifford Park. This will be the first phase of the project, which would be four, for-sale townhomes. The second phase of the project would be at this site, which would be seven for-sale townhomes as well. So a total of 11 units that would be a result of this entire project of a little over 2.7 million in investment into this particular neighborhood, excuse me, which would support a TIF of $470,000. The total eligible costs are greater than that, about $564,000, and that, of course, includes acquisition and site prep and those types of things, as well as public improvements, streetscaping, curb and gutter and sidewalks. So this particular project is the result of Stephen Held, the developer here, who is, has been, of course, involved in the midtown area, redeveloping the neighborhoods, and has moved north now to the Gifford Park neighborhood. And I do have, this is a rendering of a concept for the Gifford Park rows, so this would be the first phase at 34th and Davenport. So looking from the rear of that particular site. And then Phase Two, which would begin once the first phase is completed. So this is the site layout, California Street, 32nd. And this is the concept for those particular units. This particular concept may look a little more familiar to those in the Leavenworth neighborhood that are further south of this particular area. And with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Stephen Held, representing the ownership of, ownership and developer of Uptown Properties, LLC, 11506 Nicholas Street. I can answer any questions you may have on behalf of Uptown.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Chris Foster, 3413 California Street. And yeah, I'm in approval, and we've, we think this could be maybe a good model process working with a developer on infill housing in older midtown neighborhoods.
I know it's a real challenge, and Stephen and the GPNA board and the neighborhood have worked together on, on, first it came with eleven units on that second phase, and then with some, some of our input and on both the design and the number and density, he reduced it down to seven and made some other changes, so we think it's been a good process, and the, I do want to comment on the Phase One, which has not been a good experience so far at Thirty-fourth and Davenport. We felt like it was a really good house, solid house that was torn down in two thousand and fourteen, and, and since then, it's been, you know, kind of a muddy mess, a hole in the ground, you know, dirt has flowed down into the Gifford Park parking lot, and it's plugged up the drain, and, and kids have had to walk around a closed sidewalk for a long time, and parents have been upset, so just talked to the guy across the street that, just before coming here, and he says, let's get it done, so that'd be great to get that rolling, get that done, the design looks good, the original Eric Clark, we had worked with him also, so again, we had a good process, just some unfortunate occurrences occurred where now Stephen's taking over, so. And then the, the only other thing, a couple things, is the back end parking, angled parking, not something the neighborhood's really very positive about, I don't know if that could be regular angled parking, I don't know if that's a city requirement, but that'd be nice to look at that, if that could be changed, and especially with all the other development, the new elementary school and the Todd Heastad New Style Development with the hospital and other development around there, that'll add a lot of parking stress around there, so just something to, to consider, and, and I think also, Stephen, if you can keep us updated, you know, if there are any design changes, but keep the neighborhood updated, we'd appreciate it, and again, just, just trying to get quality infill development, so those are the neighborhood's concerns, but we're, you know, we're positive.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, thirty-one twenty-six Chicago Street. I live up the street on Chicago, and I've been seeing some of the work moving the land and stuff like that, so I look forward to seeing the neighborhood once this project is completed. I just wanted to comment, though, that that park gets used a lot often, and then also just cat a quarter to that during the summer, they have the farmer's market, so if at any time, if you guys could, you know, maybe get some better playing grounds down there, that'd be great, but the work, the city is doing in this project is very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Mr. Hell for respecting the process that I laid out at the beginning when he approached me about taking over the Clark project at Thirty-fourth and Davenport there. He was immediately pointed to the Gifford Park Neighborhood Association direction to collaborate with them, to get input, and it seems as though the process has worked well, and it'll continue to work well as long as you continue with that process, because there's really active members in that neighborhood and who are invested in that neighborhood who have numerous projects that they do, both programming for the residents and children of the neighborhood, as well as investing in the buildings and rehabilitating them. So you're to be commended for what you've done so far, don't lose sight of the fact that what got you this far, because that's the key ingredient to how you move forward in a successful way. The, the project at Thirty-fourth and Davenport, I would add, they, they were taken down by the Great Recession, and, and they had asked for TIF from the city, but it was not approved because they didn't have enough units and didn't have other properties assembled that they could take it with, so what sits there today is this dirt lot with a foundation, a couple steel beams that go across what was supposed to be the first floor, so it is a mess, we get complaints about that regularly, and I just want you to come back up and tell us what your game plan is in terms of a start date, what you estimate is filing for your building permits and getting a unit, however many you need sold before you start.
Yeah, so Stephen Hell, one one five oh six Nicholas Street, Uptown Properties, LLC. We, we've actually wanted to start for quite some time, we just wanted to make sure we got through the TIF process, because that, that is the only reason we are able to move forward with finishing that out. So we're planning on starting here in the next few weeks, I believe that we can, there was actually a building permit that was in place that hasn't expired yet, so we can simply take that over, and so I think we've worked with the city to do that, so we're planning on getting that finished out here as quickly as possible and starting back up here in the next couple of weeks, and then the second phase we would do next year, so.
Good. And then with regard to the directional parking, I probably surmise you don't have a great deal of concern if it's back in or pull in, but would you be willing to meet with the city's traffic engineering department and the neighborhood to work that out before you make a final determination on the design?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I know that's been, well, I'm not sure what the city stance is on it, I know that was, I think we had shown that because we had thought that that was what the city would like to see, but it seems like there's, I don't know, a fair number of people who have kind of voiced concerns, so we'd be happy to.
You'll follow up with the traffic engineers?
Yep.
Good, okay, thank you. Well, thanks for your investment and to your team, and I'm sure the neighborhood looks forward to, I think you have a meeting coming up here this month, don't you?
Next month.
Next month, at the, still at the hospital, right? Okay, so continue to participate in the neighborhood, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just want to take the opportunity to commend Mr. Foster for his work in the neighborhood there, and I really have enjoyed seeing the progress with, with the community gardens too, I think it's been a great addition there, and helping to create that sense of identity that these residential units, I think, can help promote as well, and the whole Thirty-third and California area really is, has its nice identity and has, I think, a, a great future, so I commend the work you've been doing and support this today as well. Second.
Moving seconded to approve item twenty-eight, there are no further lights roll call.
Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-eight is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to city council rule seven H, due no meeting being held October eleventh, third reading and public hearing on agenda items number twenty-nine through thirty shall be held on October eighteenth. Pursuant to city council rule seven H, the third reading on agenda items number thirty-one through thirty-four should be held on October eighteenth, the public hearing on these items are today. Ordinance is on second reading and planning board attachments, item thirty-one, ordinance vacating South Fortieth Street from North Rightaway line of Leavenworth Street, south to the right away line of Jones Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Thirty-two is ordinance vacating Emily Street, Saddle Creek Road, and Forty-second, Forty-fifth Street, north of Emily to Dewey Avenue, and Forty-fourth Street, south of Dewey Avenue to the right away line of Farnham Street, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-two is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item thirty-three, ordinance clearance of the appropriating property located in the Clifton Hills South Redevelopment Plan area for the implementation of the Clifton Hills South Redevelopment Plan by the construction of new single-family homes.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-three is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Thirty-four, ordinance to amend section thirty-two dash two thirteen, dealing with waste, our watershed management fees to provide watershed management fee changes.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-four is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Pursuant to city council rule seven H, the second reading of public hearing on agenda items thirty-five through forty shall be held on October eighteenth.
Moving seconded to adjourn, no lights roll call.
Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adjourn at two thirty-two PM.